August the 13th, Monday morning, we'll bring this ready session to Summerville County Commissioners Court. Well, let's record, say, let the show Larry Hulsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Krantz are all present. Would you please join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all may be saying if you'd like, Larry, would you say a prayer for the court, please?
Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the rain you give us. We pray for wisdom on this court, Lord. May it well be done, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, out of number three, from the previous minutes of the Commissioners Court.
Michelle, I'm showing three meetings, July the 9th, and two on July the 23rd.
That's correct.
That's correct. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from previous meetings.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
I have a second by Don, and you've heard the questions or discussions from Michelle or John. All in favor, said a motion. That's five far, zero against. Out of number four is presentation in concern of Summerville County residents. I know we're all adults here, but we'll go over a few game rules and ground rules right quick. Only one person speak at a time, we won't speak over each other. If you hear what you were planning on saying, already said, let's don't repeat each other. I was told by Rick Clark, I don't see there is Rick right there, that Rick, Peter Graffman, Ben Carr, Mr. Hawkins, is that correct? Who's going to speak, and I believe Bridges Hague may be here, or maybe representative of paper, Bridges, how you doing? And it may be representative of the plant itself. So, Rick, you're the one that called me first, so if you want, you can come up here and make sure the little red light's on, if you will, on the microphone. And I think I already said we each have three minutes, and then move on to the next.
Very good. Good morning, my name's Rick Clark. Been a resident of Summerville County for 19 years. And, uh, main reason I moved here was the family atmosphere, the tourism, and the quality of life. What I see in this proposal from Westward Environmental Engineering Natural Resources, 36 pages, if you haven't gone to the library and gotten your personal copy, has a potential of destroying that. It can destroy our roads. It's going to destroy our quality of life. If hasn't already devalued your property, there's a good chance that will happen. One of the first things I did when I moved here was go to M&amp;W Ranch, to Merrily Lilies, and help develop Friends of the Brazos. It's been an active organization since that time in controlling the groundwater, the Brazos River, the quality of the river, and keeping it going. It's been an uphill battle ever since with the Brazos River Authority to do those type of things. Again, I find myself speaking about an environmental issue, a social issue, a property value issue concerning Ingram Mining and M&amp;W Ranch. My questions are this: Is the county concerned about the quality of our roads? What is this additional? What I hear is 100, 150 more trucks a day going to do to FM 200, to 401, and whatever else path they take to get the product out of there? Noise, light, dust, total disruption of quality of life. I watched two baby eagles grow up in my backyard this year. They nest down towards Helen Curran's property. There's an environmental and waterfowl and wildlife concern. And I know this court doesn't do all of those types of things, but I just want to make sure I air those types of concerns this morning. We wouldn't have a packed room like this if there weren't more than one or two people concerned about this. Where is the water going to come from? I've already seen and I have pictures of a sand and gravel washing machine taken into M&amp;W Ranch.
Ten seconds, Rick.
Are we going to let our county look like a piece of Swiss cheese with all this going on before we do something about it? I know there's laws, there's regulations, but there's also laws that can be written and things changed. That's what part of this court is for. Y'all have a civic, moral, and political elective responsibility to show concern for the citizens of this county.
Three minutes, Rick.
Thank you.
And Rick reminded me of something that I didn't say, I apologize. Since it's not on the agenda as far as the action item, you know, the court, as far as the court, won't discuss or answer questions on this matter, but of course they listen to all the input and take it under advisement, things like that. And you are right, as far as property owners disputes, county court doesn't get involved in that, that's civil matters, but you are correct. All right, is Peter Graffman, if I said that right?
I'm going to yield to Ben Carr, then I'll go after Ben.
Ben Carr, all right. I'll reset the timer so I don't hold Rick against you. All right, you're Ben Carr, is that correct?
My name is Ben Carr, I'm the Vice President of Operations for Ocean Canyon Properties. We are the owners of Trace Rios Resort, which is directly across the river from the Ingram Plant that is being proposed. We obviously have a very deep and, uh, concern as the impact that this rock crushing plant is going to have on the investment that we have made. As a business, we employ 25 to 30 folks at our business. We host over 30,000 nights of camping at Trace Rios. And based upon figures provided by the Texas Tourism Council, which states that the average tourist will spend approximately $119.50 a day per person while on vacation, our suggested annual contribution to the local economy exceeds $5 million. Our obvious concern is that, is those who have always come to Trace Rios and stayed with us learn that they will soon be subjected to a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week cacophony of mining, white pollution, and dust from an operation just across the river from their campsite, that our number of guests and their local financial contributions will begin to dwindle. We certainly understand the desire to encourage new business in this county and the subsequent inflow of taxes, revenues, and employment that a new business can bring. But Summerville County has a long and proud history of being a recreational destination for city-weary residents. Therefore, it's puzzling to me why we might entertain a level of business expansion within the county that seems so contrary to the tap route that has nourished this county's success for the past century. We've obviously invested millions of dollars in the acquisition and subsequent improvements of this storied resort, renovated the oldest active outdoor pool in the state of Texas, built by mules in 1919, repaired old limestone buildings, and created improved access to the rivers so folks can see the abundant natural resources that are available to them here in Summerville. It's our ardent hope that the county will assume a strong position to preserve the rich recreational heritage and history of this area. And as we welcome new businesses to Summerville County, we look to welcome those types of businesses that are consistent and synergistic with our culture here. We want our business to grow, we want to continue to employ citizens of this county, and we want our financial impact to continue to grow as well. What we don't want is for Summerville County to become the place that Joni Mitchell wrote about, when she sang in the song "The Big Yellow Bus," "They paid paradise and they put up a parking lot." Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Peter Graffman, is that right? Am I saying your last name right, or wrong? Boy, I got lucky there.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Peter Graffman, I'm the co-founder and co-owner of Ocean Canyon Properties and Trace Rios RV Resort. I want to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to speak today against the Ingram Rock Crushing Plant. Ben Carr, our VP of Operations eloquently stated our position and the harm that we believe it will do to Summerville County residents, our businesses, our business, other businesses that rely on tourism and recreation in the county. Over the next 10 years, this Ingram operation will harm Summerville County more than anyone can even imagine today. If this operation is allowed to proceed, it will be a rape of Summerville County. This operation will destroy the natural landscape, displace wildlife, pollute the air, pollute the Brazos River, create noise pollution, and negatively impact the Summerville County quality of life 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the next 10 years of that lease. And what will happen after 10 years? They'll walk away, leaving the raped landscape and environment for someone else to clean up. At a meeting that concerns Summerville County residents over the weekend, which our manager attended, a county commissioner in attendance stated that Ingram will pay millions of dollars in taxes over the span of that 10-year lease, which he said would greatly benefit the county. In my opinion, these taxes paid would be blood money. That is, money paid for destroying the environment and the quality of life in Summerville County. Trace Rios RV Resort and Ocean Canyon Properties, with the help of our neighbors in Summerville County, are going to vigorously oppose the Ingram Rock Crushing Plant operation on many levels, multiple levels, through regulatory and legal challenges every step of the way. And I invite anybody in this room to participate with us, we are not going to give up. We urge the Summerville County Commissioners to join us in this fight against this rock crushing plant, for the greater good of all residents, businesses, future visitors in and to Summerville County. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. All right, next one Rick told me was Ralph Hawkins, is that correct? You, Mr. Hawkins, how you doing?
I'm doing great, thank you. I'm not sure how to flip these slides, are you in control of that?
Yes, sir, I'm afraid I am, so I could be your detriment.
Pace it out to three minutes.
I can do that.
My family's been here since, uh, since the late 1880s. In fact, my, the original cabin is built, uh, has been rebuilt recently down the road from me, 13 by 13-foot log cabin. My name is Ralph Hawkins, and I am a resident at 1123 County Road 401, and I'm approximately 1,000 feet from this gravel rock pit. And I'm in opposition predominantly because of many of the reasons mentioned before. The general approach of this, my presentation, will be really just to talk about the nuisance, many things that you can't control, and Commissioner Curtis has talked to us about that, but there are some things that you can't control. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Well, you jumped on that one quick.
You didn't want to. Uh, so, so the large scale of the operation, as you see in this slide, is tremendous. It's the largest in Summerville County that I can find. It's about the size of five to six town squares.
I'm not trying to jack with you, I'm just not sure.
Okay, that's fine. And then we're going to be talking about the noise, the dust, the views, the setbacks of operation we've got great concerns about, and the use of water, time, and length of operation, and access and egress by the trucks, which I'd like to propose to the Commissioners' Court to specifically address. The scale of operation is enormous and very impactful to the neighborhood, and, uh, go ahead, can you keep going? I just wanted to show you a similar-sized pit. No, keep going. There you go. That's actually a smaller pit, but it shows the scarification of the property. On the next slide, noise is a major issue in terms of the rock crushing machinery and noise from the diesel trucks. We have heard about this being a 24/7 operation, that's what's in the application, and if it's anything else that should be changed in the application. So, that's something that we do have concerns about, noise from diesel trucks coming and going, and the impact, as we talked about in the floor and the fauna in the area, including the bald eagle. We have two of 56 mating pairs in Summerville County, out of 56 in the state of Texas, so this is significant, as you heard earlier. Dust is a major issue with this, as you know, in the last 10 years, we've had a lot of dust and dryness that has created these dust plumes. If you continue, the amount of water that it's going to take to kind of keep these dust plumes are going to be an issue. Here's the dust plumes 11 months out of the year at the top of the page, that will go across productive farm fields, ranches, houses, and the resort, of course. And to the south, one month, the prevailing breezes are from the north to the south, and that will impact also further farms and ranches. The, uh, the views to the property are going to be significant. By the way, this gravel pit will take up about two-thirds of that whole oxbow in the Brazos River. The setbacks, we'd like to see at 1,500 feet, which is what the John Gray's water, Brazos Waterway requires to keep some of this operation back.
A little over three minutes, Mr. Hawkins.
I'm over?
Just a little bit.
Oh, okay. Just one more thing, use of water is of concern. Access and egress is a big question, and this is where the Commissioners' Court can act, and that is put weight restrictions on the county roads at 401, 410, 415, and 416. You can do that, working with the Texas Department of Health. None of these, none of these roads, by the way, are even close to 24 tons, and these trucks are probably 36 to 40 tons, driving on our roads that we paid for and that we maintain. So with that, I'll end, thank you.
You best thank you, Mr. Hawkins. All right, Bridges, are you next?
Did you say so?
Yeah, it's up to you.
I'm ready.
All right.
Before I begin my part, I just wanted to ask Mr. Carr and everyone in here, are you aware that Trace Rios loves the river so much that they've applied for a permit to dump their sewage into her? Is everyone aware of that? They're dumping their sewage and the sewage of their guests into our river. Yes, that's what they're doing. Okay. I'm ready to start.
I'll start it, thank you.
Okay. My name is Bridges Hague. I grew up in Glen Rose, and the M&amp;W Ranch has been my family home since we moved there for good in 1967, some 51 years ago. And let me be very clear, everything about it matters to me. The same is true of the Brazos River, which I've gone to bat for through an organization I co-founded known as Friends of the Brazos, whose fundraiser I've hosted at our home for the past 13 years. Mr. Hawkins has only attended one, the Trace Rios folks have attended zero. Anyone who thinks I would intentionally harm either our family farm or the Brazos River does not know me. For the last several years, at great expense, we have been confronting a major erosion crisis that left unchecked could be way more damaging than any sand operation, while at the same time revolutionary changes in mining technology have taken place. Ingram, a major company with a regulatory compliance score of .02, which is only 1% away from perfect, will be constructing a revolutionary, state-of-the-art plant with a small footprint. Mr. Hawkins didn't know the facts, so he made crap up. That's what that is, that's made up crap. Right, Ralph? Right? Yeah. Will be constructed revolutionary, state-of-the-art plant with a small footprint that features the latest in water recycling technology, reducing water consumption by 60 to 80%, and the plant will employ rainwater capture recycling. We will be repurposing an existing irrigation well to easily meet their reduced water requirements consistent with our goal of eliminating any interaction with the Brazos River. This plant is also designed to be very quiet and will have electric line power, thus no emissions from diesel generators. Since none of the big drag lines will be used, the profile of the work will be that of a bulldozer and an excavator. We have strategically tucked the plant between a tree farm and a mountain where it is a half a mile away from any riverbank and a mile from Trace Rios. Only a fraction of this community will even be aware this plant exists. 99.999% of the people that live here will never know it's there. No one canoeing in the river, no one camping at Trace Rios, no one living on County Road 312 will ever see or hear this plant. Don't interrupt me. This plant will operate, we will not, also, we will not be mining anywhere near the river or in the pecan bottom. We estimate the loss of zero trees. This plant will operate normal business hours, Monday through Friday, not at night, not on the weekends. There will be no work lights, thus zero light pollution, near zero noise pollution, and extraordinary measures due to the type of plant it has, which waters the material going in, there will be very little to no dust. Since it is estimated that less than 20% of the material will require any type of crushing, the new high-tech quiet crusher will only operate two or three hours a day, not 24/7, and we believe no one will ever hear it. Since most of this material is bound for the metroplex, 312 is not at risk for any traffic increase, nor is the city of Glen Rose or the Glen Rose Square. In fact, this operation will result in the phase-out of the Ingram Rainbow Plant, and those trucks will disappear. So really, there will be net, no net new trucks, and the distance traveled by trucks on non-highway roads will be reduced by 95%.
We just passed three minutes, Bridges.
Okay, when I'm responding to a lot, we talked, and they all went over, so. We will be a quiet.
Mr. Hawkins did about one minute, so.
We will be a quiet, almost hidden operation, we will only mine small areas, hearing the land as we go, and we have set aside and are ready to plant as many as 500 large oak trees as part of the massive reclamation process, as our goal is to come back better than before, not rape the land. These are the facts, folks. And now a word regarding Mr. Hawkins, who put together this sensational presentation last Saturday. Are you aware that Ralph was the longtime CEO of HKS, one of the largest and most influential architectural firms in the world, employing 925 of only the very best architects, and that their projects include massive civic centers, airports, seaports, and yes, state-of-the-art NFL stadiums? You know Mr. Hawkins himself specified nearly a billion pounds of concrete into AT&amp;T Stadium alone? And that every ounce of that started at somebody's farm in the form of sand and gravel, went down a county road to a farm-to-market road to a highway to become a school, or a stadium, or a hospital.
Okay, thank you, Bridges. Thank you. That was good, thank you. All right, is that the last one on the gravel pit? You bet. You have three minutes also.
So, Judge, Commissioners, and citizens, my name is Tommy Matthews, I'm the President of Westward Environmental, we prepared the application for this facility. I just want to first introduce myself and avail myself to the court for any technical questions, but also maybe to address some of the impacts and folks, concerns that people have about the facility, and hopefully put a little bit of chronology to things. We permitted for the facility a sand and gravel operation several months ago with the state of Texas. The request is before everyone now, and it was public notice in the paper, is to add a rock crusher. And simply, all that Ingram's requesting to do is to be able to have the capacity to take those larger pieces of gravel that come out of their mining operation and crush them into smaller ones. It's a wet operation, majority of the work is done in a saturated condition. If they were not to get the rock crushing permit, the sand and gravel authorization's already there, the facility will still go forward, but that material had to be transported off-site to their existing crusher at their Rainbow Plant, and then re-crushed and brought back to be blended back in. So, really, the question before the state and that everyone got notice of is that small piece, make big pieces, take big pieces, make small pieces out of them all around, so, pretty simple. A very high-tech operation, you know, when we mow our yards on a dusty summer day, we probably create more dust with that lawnmower than we coke and hack and wheeze our way through than this facility's going to do on a given day on a given operation. That's the beauty about wet sand and gravel plants, it's not like a larger open pit mine where they drill and blast the rock, this is the wet material that's being processed even wetter, so it come out to be a washed and clean product. The 24/7, we, I've been doing this work for, oh my gosh, 30-something years. The state of Texas requires in the application that if you want the capacity to run in any given hour of the day, you have to list 24/7, they can come back and limit that. We have to calculate the emissions from the facility, an example, the rock crusher, we have to do a model, we have to say, all right, what are all the hours of the year? And in any of those hours of the year, if they ran the one hour where the winds were the stillest and we had a thermal inversion, what would happen with those emissions? We have to calculate that, and they don't allow us the flexibility in their paperwork to do it any other way, so. As stated, the facility here is going to run normal business hours, weekdays, very infrequently even does the Rainbow Ship Plant ever even ship on the weekends, in the rarest of circumstances, so. It's a bit of a misnomer, and I'll hopefully that can alleviate some folks fears. Those of y'all at the recreational park, I don't think your folks are going to know it's over there, they're not going to hear it, it's not going to be running at your peak times, obviously during the summer days, and that, it'll be over there, but it's going to be a substantial distance away from everyone there. The only other thing that people, and it had been brought up in here, but I offer it up to folks, you know, you'll hear at construction sites that beeping sound when there's backup beepers on things, and that can be a piercing noise, it travels through the still air. We visit with Ingram's management, talk to them about using what's called a discriminating backup beeper, so it doesn't beep automatically when you put the vehicle in reverse, it senses when there's something behind there, and it actually warns the operator in the cab rather than beeping out into the air where everyone else is, so.
We just crossed over three minutes.
Well, my timing is good, Your Honor?
You got it, thank you. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question?
Uh, one question, then we're going to move on with Commissioners, but you can't be to the Commissioners' Court, is it to this gentleman right here? One question, then we're going to move on with the court business.
So, we've seen a picture of the, what he thinks the size of the footprint's going to be, and I'd like to hear from you, what size of the footprint of this mining operation going to be?
At any given time, the maximum open footprint of this site will be 20 acres. And so, what, the way it's set up in their lease documents, my understanding is, they can open up up to two pits, up to 10 acres each, and then after they go through their reclamation restoration project, then they're allowed to open up some additional areas. So the footprint will be minimized, it'll be a progressive process, you earn the right to go to the next area.
All right, thank all y'all, and I'd appreciate it if there's any further discussions, arguments, complaints amongst yourselves, please do it in the hallway, or outside, or in the parking lot, or, do what? Right quick, you can, and we're going to move on with county business. What is your name? I know your place. Do what?
Joshua Haynes.
And you'll be the last one.
I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I thought it might be a good idea. I'm the manager that manages the aggregate operations for Ingram. I own a citizen of Summerville County. I've lived in Glen Rose for over 20 years. I love this community as you do. I'm not going to say I love it as much or more because I don't know, but I love this community. I love the Brazos River. I will not do anything to harm the Brazos River. It is in my best interest, my personal best interest, to take care of the river and to take care of this community and to take care of this land, and I will do everything that I can to do so. The plant that we are constructing, I'm the one that is designing the plant and making decisions on which equipment will be used. If there's any questions, I would be obliged to answer those questions to the best that I can.
What's your truck access to the pit?
Hey, gentlemen, if we're going to continue this, as far as discussing between each other, that's going to be outside, so we can move on to Commissioners' Court, please?
With that being said, I want to reiterate that we intend on having as little disruption to the community as possible. I know it's an invasive process, and it's an ugly process, but it's a necessary process to be able to make concrete. We're standing on concrete right now, I mean, it's a big part of our life. Unfortunately, the materials that are needed to make concrete are not abundant, and they are found almost exclusively along rivers, but not every river. The Brazos River has it, but it's not all along the river, it's almost exclusively the river bends. So, if we're going to continue to have concrete, we have to be able to produce these materials. No. The name of the game for us is to be good stewardships of the limited resource that we have. We know that we mine a non-renewable limited resource. Our intention is to take an innovative approach to revolutionize the way that concrete is produced, the way that the materials for the concrete is produced. Much of the cost of this plant is for the water recycling, the water reclamation. It is a water treatment plant, as much as it is a sand and gravel plant, very different from the conventional plants that y'all are accustomed to. And it is not a silica plant. There is very little silica content in the minerals that we mine. It is not like what you see with EOG Hood County Sand.
You're right at three minutes, Commissioner.
The Unim. And if, when we leave here, if there's any questions that you would like to ask, I would be obliged to discuss further.
Thank you, sir. And as y'all researched what I did here this morning, by law... And as y'all research what I did here this morning, by law, I can give the one topic 30 minutes, whether it's one person or 10 people, and we have reached your 30 minutes, so when you research what I did, right or wrong, that's what the law is. Dennis, you know the law. Yeah, open me. All right. So if y'all will, let's please, any further discussions or complaints or issues, if y'all will take it outside amongst yourselves, we'll continue on with court business. Thank you all. Yes, thank you, Bridget. Y'all have a good, you bet.
Now you don't have to be nervous about what you're doing.
I know, right? Are your auditor people in here?
Yeah, he's back here somewhere.
He hid in the mess?
He came in the hallway, started his.
Actually, time to send it.
Yeah, he's setting the gates back, well.
I meant to send it out.
What was your name again? Sir? What was your name again? What was your name again? Tommy Matthews. Thanks, sir. What Bridget just handed out, if y'all want to look at it later. Hey, Tom, how you doing, man? All right.
Judge, Commissioners, I'd like to present to you Mr. Jeremy Shalhoub, a shareholder and also our secure partner in charge of our external audit, he is with the firm of Foster, Morgan &amp; Young, and he is here to present the findings that the auditor report to you.
All right, let's calm this down, close these doors before we can hear.
Thank you.
What we did is we moved 11th to number five, so this gentleman can get down and get on down.
Greatly appreciated.
And Jeremy is probably quite disappointed to be part of the crowd.
I thought they were all here for me. I've never had that happen for an auditor.
Close it off, all right, Mark? Yeah, Mark, yeah, there you go, thank you. All right.
All right. Thanks, Brian, and I'll just go and jump into it, I know y'all have a full agenda. So as you mentioned, this is the financial statement audit for the year ending 9/30/2017. If y'all would, go ahead and open up, there's not a page number, but it's the very first page with our BNY letterhead. And that very last paragraph there is the opinion that we give, and we gave a unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give as an accounting firm. And just to be clear, we give several opinions on here, we look at all the funds individually, we looked at the general fund individually, we looked at all the non-major funds as a group, we looked at the enterprise funds, which is also your golf course and your expo center. So we're giving lots of opinions in here, and in our opinion, these financial statements are presented fairly and free of material misstatement due to fraud or error. And once again, that is known as a unqualified opinion, so that's good. And if you would, turn to page three. On page three, you will see the MDNA, known as the Management Discussion and Analysis, and this gives management, Brian's department, the opportunity to kind of, and we call it plain English, look at the financials and kind of break it down in a more understandable, straightforward way. There's some discussion there on the fund accounting we use and why we do it, and there's also the opportunity there for the county to kind of talk about where they've come and where they're going, if there's any significant purchases during the year or plans for the upcoming year, and there's also some additional budgetary highlights. And one other thing I want to point out, in this section is the only place in the financial statements that you'll see comparisons from year to year. Most of the time, your governmental financial statements are presented on standalone years because that's how y'all budget, so there's not a lot of time spent comparing years, but sometimes I find that very useful. So you will find that in the MDNA, you can find comparative financial statements. I want to jump over to page 16. On page 16, you'll find a balance sheet for the governmental funds. Balance sheet is just a snapshot in time, so what we're looking at here is on September 30th, 2017. If you were to take a picture of the balance sheet of the county, this is what it would look like. You have two columns here, general fund and non-major fund. Your general fund is all your main operations of the county, excluding all your non-major special revenue funds. A special revenue fund is if y'all get a dollar earned somewhere and there's a legal restriction on it, it has to be accounted for in its own fund. That non-major governmental fund column there has eight different small funds in it, and then like I said, your general fund, your main operations, which includes all your road and bridge funds. So that far right column is your total governmental funds. The total assets in your governmental funds was 10.98 million, and of that, you will notice 10.7 million is cash and cash equivalents. As we work our way down the balance sheet, you take your assets, you back out your liabilities, and you end up with a fund balance at the bottom of 10.6 million dollars. Once again, a large portion of that is in cash, so that's one sign of a healthy county, so I just wanted to point that out for what it's worth. If you would, turn over to page 18. If this was a for-profit business, this page 18, we would call it the income statement, so it takes, shows all the inflows or receipts for the year, and it backs out all your expenditures and kind of says, hey, here's where we ended up for the year. Once again, you have two columns there, one for the general fund and one for your non-major. Almost all the activity is running through your general fund. That far right column, you'll see total revenues of 12.1 million dollars for the year. Of that, a very large portion, 10.2 million, comes directly from property taxes, which you are very aware of. As you work your way down that far right column, you'll see total expenditures of 11.4 million dollars. And there's a lot of detail up there, it kind of breaks out by department and road and bridge, and kind of shows you where those expenditures are coming from. If we take our revenues and back out our total expenditures, we had a, our revenues exceeded our expenditures by 685,000 dollars for the year. And if you work your way down just a little bit more, you'll see a, I don't know if y'all can see that, there's a 693,000 dollars in parentheses, that's actually a transfer out, so we had a little bit of profit, if you would say, and that got transferred over to your enterprise funds, which is your golf course and your expo center, and we'll see that in just a minute when we look at those standalone statements. Let's go ahead and do that, let's jump over to page 20. Page 20 is a balance sheet of your business-type activities here in the county, which is your golf course. You'll see the columns labeled there, and we have expo slash amphitheater, and then you have that far right column. So once again, this is a balance sheet, this is a snapshot as of September 30th, 2017, of how much y'all had in assets, liabilities, and the difference there is your equity. Total assets of your enterprise funds was right at 12 million dollars. 10.5 million of that was made up of capital expenditures y'all bought, equipment, golf carts, computer systems, all that rolls into that number, and about 1.1 million is in cash and cash equivalents.
Jeremy, that 10 million is the net after depreciation?
Yes.
If you want to look at the historical investment the county's made in those two funds, look at the line, two lines above that, you'll see that the historical investment in the golf course is 16 million, 689, and the historical investment, the expo center, 15, 813, 900, for a grand total of 32 million, 502, 969.
And the way that works, when y'all purchase something that has a useful life, and each year we depreciate just a little bit until that fixed asset is eventually fully depreciated, so the total historical cost is, as Brian pointed out, 32.5 million, accumulated depreciation of about 22 million, that nets out to the 10.5 million. If y'all had not purchased any more fixed assets, y'all would see that number trickle down every year as y'all depreciated it and expensed it out. So we take our total assets, we back out the liabilities as you work your way down this statement. At the very bottom, if you take all your assets and back out your liabilities, there was 11, right at 11 million in equity in your enterprise funds, which once again, most of that is sitting in capital expenditures that have been capitalized. On page 21 is the income statement for your enterprise funds. At the very top, same kind of presentation, we're looking at the far right column at the top, total revenues were 2.2 million dollars, and you can kind of see the breakout there, 1.5 million for your golf course, 661,000 for the expo slash amphitheater. As you work your way down on the far right column, you see total expenses were 3.4 million, so we had a loss of 1.2 million on operating the golf course and expo center. And as you work down just a little bit further in that next section, we can see that 693,000 that came over from the general fund was pumped into the enterprise fund, and so you take your loss of 1.2, you take into account the money that was moved over from the general fund, and you end up with a, basically a loss for the year, 527,000 dollars in your enterprise funds.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
No, that's fine. On page 25, I just want to point out a few other things, we're flying through these pretty quickly. On page 25, this is beginning of the footnotes to the financial statements. Almost any question you have or additional detail, we have a breakout of the different categories of fixed assets, different types of debt, and there's a more extensive, obviously, conversation here about why the accounting is done, why do we do accounting different for the enterprise fund versus the general fund. It's all in here. There's also additional information about the pension accruing out there for the TCDRS retirement that's going to come due for all employees and how y'all are funding that. I won't go through any of that in depth, but I did want to point out the footnotes, if y'all ever have any additional questions, you can look there. And as always, Brian knows how to get a hold of me, so there's a lot of information here. As y'all look at it, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email, and I'd love to discuss it further.
If you'll look on page 14, you'll see where we list that pension liability. You'll see that the number that I, we talk about at budget time, you'll see in the far right column, 425, 604, that's the number of the pension liability, the unfunded pension liability as of September 30th, 2017.
What percentage is it? What's the percent fund?
We're about 87, 88% funded on our pension, and we're working through that. There's some extensive discussion in the footnotes, and especially on page 47, there is a schedule of the last 10 years of our contributions, and you'll see that the amount of contribution as a percent of the cover table continues to increase.
If you looked at 254 counties, State of Texas, what's the average percentage fund that's covered?
We are right in the sweet spot. We are, there are very few counties that are, that are over 99%. The majority of the 254 are in that 80 to 95% range. We are definitely right there with, with the majority of counties. And of course, TCDRS has us on a 10-year payout to rectify that situation, so.
Rectifying, bringing it to?
To 100%, barring any future actions that would incur greater liability, such as, you know, COLAs, buybacks, things of that nature, which increase our liability. Obviously, a bad year in the market could also jeopardize that as well. But as I said before, those are actuarial numbers, so, you know, they're scientific, but they're also guesses. Based upon life expectancy, absolutely.
And on page 43, they even add that into your footnote. At the very top on page 43, they say, hey, if we swing that discount rate one percentage one way or another, that liability goes from 4.1 million to 900,000, or if it swings negatively, it could jump up to 7.9. So Brian's right, it's something they look at every year and take their best shot in the dark.
You know, as, as the news, I mean, you open up the newspaper and you see Fort Worth Fire Department's having a crisis right now, the news is replete with Dallas, fire, police pension having state bailout, you know, I would say that with being 80, over 80% funded, we're nowhere in, in that crisis situation at all. In fact, if even one of those pensions were at the 80%, it wouldn't even make the news. Theirs is close to being bankrupt.
Hey, Judge, since this is an open meeting, you think we should open it?
Yeah, we probably ought to open it and ask him to get, get on out of the hallway. I thought it'd be gone by now.
We don't want to get a complaint?
I know. Oh, the door being, being shut, people want to find that out?
That's why I asked him not to shut it.
They should be gone by now anyhow.
And it was harshly shut. I don't disagree.
All right, sorry about that, go ahead, man.
That's all I had.
But one of your early statements, with the 10 mil that we have.
In the general fund, sitting in cash?
Is a indicator of a healthy county.
Yes.
I like that.
And I very rarely, because I don't know y'all's future plans, so for me to say y'all are healthy, I don't know what y'all are planning to do next year, but from the other counties, audit and cities and special districts, your debt to equity and even your expenditures to reserves is, is healthy. Yeah, absolutely.
And Jeremy's quite aware, being with us the last two or three years, the justification for the large cash balance was our concentration of a risk from a property tax correction perspective with litigation and things of that nature, so, you know, if we were a quote-unquote normal county, we're the largest taxpayer with 5 or 6% of our total portfolio, he probably would be chastised against us for keeping that much cash.
You can make that argument, but y'all are very unique in, in what y'all deal with and having such a large, single taxpayer, so it is quite different.
Yes, Patrick. I just want to give you the wake. All right, anything else?
I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks.
And I should say, the audit went incredibly smooth, as it has the last few years, so kudos to Brian and Treasurer and staff.
And we have to thank the department heads, also.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, now we'll jump back to number five, discuss take acts on accepting special warranty deed from Mr. Van Carter on County Road leading into Rock Creek Cemetery. I believe, John, you guys?
Yeah, I had presented y'all the map, and Andy had reviewed this, and the judge will sign it, but it's just a deed granting that property to us to maintain access, since that's not a county road, and even though we have to maintain, maintain the road going into a cemetery, this just adds clarification to that. So I make a motion that we accept the special warranty gift deed from Suzanne Summers, Carter, Cynthia Adams, Amor, Sharon Stewart Adams, Loretta Adams, Hamby, Sandra Adams, Whitfield, Waylon Adams III, and Ernest Adams.
I have a motion by John to accept the deed.
Second.
Have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussions for Don? All in favor, said motion. That's five for, zero against, and I'll go back to him today.
Before we move too far on back to the audit, we actually need to take a, we need a motion and second to accept the report into the official records.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2017.
I have a motion by John, a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor, said motion. Five for, zero against. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Brian. All right, item number six, discuss take acts on final plan for Glen Oak Residential Subdivision. Don, I believe that's you.
Yes, Judge, that's right. This is a residential subdivision, it's on, located on County Road 412. It consists of eight lots, none of them under three acres. At my knowledge, it looks good.
We accepted the preliminary back in July meeting, I believe, and this is just final. My Lord, to put it to bed. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion, we accept this as a final plan.
I have a motion by Don, a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Don? All in favor, said motion. That's five for, zero against. Discuss take acts on imposition of optional fees for county tax collector. It's the ones come for us each year. I think we're pretty much where we need to be. You don't have any recommendations or changes, do you, Brian? Anybody at the court have any recommendations? You just inform that if we don't wish to change, I have to exit, sign it, and send it back to them.
I like the motion.
All right, I have a motion by Larry to keep the imposition of optional fees at current rate. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. That's five for, zero against. Number eight. Discuss take action to advertise RFPs for concessionaire contract at the expo center. Y'all threaten if I'm wrong. I think we did the three-year plan. I saw Mary's something back there somewhere. And then we've done, we've done the one-year increments up to the finals, and now we have to go back and accept RFPs from anybody and everybody. Correct?
All right. I make a motion that we solicit for RFPs for concessionaire contract for the expo center. Is there any additional verbiage or wording that we want included in that RFP?
You want them presented at the next Commissioners' Court, monthly Commissioners' Court meeting in September.
Correct?
Yes, I would like to have menu, menu items, Kenneth. I want to know what they're going to serve, and I want to know the price. So what kind of a value is it for my customer? And also would like a mandatory side meeting. This is typical. People are going to have questions about the kitchen, what belongs to the county, what belongs to the term. If I get everybody there at once, I can answer the questions. Everybody hears the answer.
Did you get all that?
Yep.
Is that in your motion?
I include that verbiage in the motion.
Good luck with that verbiage.
We would like a site meeting. We'd like a menu, and we'd like pricing of that menu. The meeting would consist of all RFPs, individuals presenting those RFPs, to have a, a one-day meeting so Frank can discuss with.
Well, the auditor's office will actually lead the meeting. Frank can be present to answer questions, but we need to make sure that the, the process remains by our RFP requirements. So we'll, we'll, we'll conduct the meeting. Frank can be there to answer specific facility questions.
Okay. Did you get all, did the motion include what you needed, Michelle?
Sure. All right. I've got a motion by John. Take it. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion about that one? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. Item number nine. Discuss take action on agreement Texas A and M AgriLife for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. You probably remember, we do this each two years. It is the exact same contracts that we've had in place, well, since I've been here for the last four years, and it is, you know, the extension office, AgriLife, so on and so forth.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Larry to continue on our contract with Texas A and M AgriLife from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against.
Have you talked to him?
Not since we discussed over exactly. Michelle? Getting these back sometimes is a challenge, so I'll sign it and see what we can get back from them as far as having them signed so we can get it filed, okay? Item number ten. Discuss take action on letter of agreement between Vistra Energy and Turnbull County relating to Code Red. You probably remember, a month or so ago, we voted to do the twenty-five hundred dollars for IPOS. Patrick is here. If you have any questions from the plant, what he does is Vistra Co-op operations would pay one-half the annual cost, which is seven thousand, ten dollars. They'd pay three thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Then in addition to that, to maintain the new annual cost for the IPOS added feature, they'll pay twenty-five hundred dollars per year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you pay half of the original contract plus the additional twenty-five hundred. And I believe we probably have went ahead and sent you the invoice for that twenty-five hundred that the court approved. Okay. So do we have any questions at all for Patrick on this agreement?
Thank you. How much, how much?
I have a motion by Larry to accept this contract.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against.
Budget transfers. Do you want to worry about the budget transfers?
Oh, are we?
Boy, you're just, you're a great guy.
Hey, Patrick.
Keep the judge in line.
I will sign this and date it, and once Michelle files, stands her, if you'll email me a copy, Michelle, once you get it filed, then I'll email the copy to you. Does that work for it? All right. No, you're fine. You're good.
We didn't want to do eleven cries.
Yeah. We're lucky that you never.
Never mind.
Well, that's, that was the most exciting thing for me.
It was, it was interesting.
Yeah.
You passed that down to her paperwork.
All right. Number twelve. Approved budget transfers. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir. I had sent these to you in email. As I discussed, all of these are, are staying within their particular department numbers, with the exception of the one that's coming from the contingency account. We got two million, five thousand dollars over to the court recording. It ran more, and I'll just give you a heads up. This is, this is a freebie. We're out of autopsy now. It's been that kind of year, so we will have to.
We got a couple more coming.
Yeah, and we're already out now. Just, we haven't received the bills, so we didn't have to transfer at this point. But we've already obligated ourselves for that, so it's going to be, you know, we have those years. You can never, you can never budget adequately for autopsy, and we've just had that year this year. So that will be coming, so.
What do you anticipate that dollar amount?
I mean, we're sitting here in August, and I'm already going to need about another ten thousand. Yeah. So depending on what, what we're going to have the rest of this month and the month of September.
Have you got plans for where that's coming to?
I've got a couple ideas, yes. We'll, we'll be dealing with that in the future, but just FYI, it's coming.
Any further discussion for Brian? I have a motion to do the budget transfers. I have a motion by Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against.
And as usual, they will become more numerous and, and as we get closer to the end of the year.
Yep.
All right. Number fourteen. Approved County Treasurer's Report. Yeah, we didn't pay the bills yet. Oh, I guess I better do them. Damn, this been a hell of a day, hasn't it?
I'm going to have to keep you straight.
All right. Do you want to pay the bills, Brian?
Well, might as well.
All right. Let's go over the bills, yeah.
Might as well. The total amount of the bills that are, that have been presented to you, gentlemen, five hundred twenty-four thousand, four thirty, and fifty-four cents. In addition, there were four that were done through payroll for employees that had dingles. Jamie Bickham, twenty-one dollars and seventeen cents. Heather Bockover, twenty-seven oh four. Heather again for twenty-four dollars. And Heather yet again for twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I make a motion with Pam Miller.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
You got a second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or comments? All in favor paying the bills. That's five for, zero against. Now let's go talk to Susie and approve our treasurer report.
I make motion to approve the treasurer report.
I have a motion by Kenneth. Second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. Accept and approve monthly reports from county departments.
I make motion to accept the county department reports.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by Don. You're very active today, Don.
I want to go home.
I hear you. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. All right. At this time, we will, retiring executive session, discuss the contract being negotiated and pending. We need a little break. And I apologize. Are you Mr. App?
App.
So that's how I said it? Okay. Great. I didn't know your place. I was assuming that, that probably was you. You bet. Nice to meet you. If you will just remain seated, then we'll move you up here in just a few minutes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. All right. This is eleven thirteen, August thirteenth. We are reconvening in open session to discuss executive session. Do I have any action to be taken on executive session? Who wants to try to word that?
I'll make a motion with that word.
All right.
I'll make a motion that, that we enter into a contract with Mr. App, actually with Fathom Enterprises. Once it has met the, the approval and consent of the county attorney, the contract will include a thirty-day out. It will be for a one-year agreement. And once the county attorney has consented, that the judge is hereby authorized to execute same on behalf of the county.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Do I have any further questions for Kelly, Brian, or anyone?
Will it be included that that one year can be extended in the contract?
The, the contract will automatically renew.
Unless either side wants to.
The objection, either side.
Mr. App, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, nothing. Just to thank you for, for your time this morning. I welcome the opportunity to work with you all.
If you don't mind getting with Brian and firming up the wording that they just discussed, and then we'll get it to Andy, and we'll get it approved, and I'll sign it, and we'll move forward from there. All right. I have a motion by Larry, a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion during this meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Judge, you have a second.
Second by Don. All in favor said motion. That's five for, zero against.
Don't forget about tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
Yeah.
We'll go through a few more problems. Do you want to be back, Brian?
Uh, no, sir. Don't do your copy.